...sixty-four boats for a total of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one nights. Patrol responded to two medical calls, one fire call, and did fifty-six public assist. Assisted the sheriffs seven times, the Coast Guard one time, and we warned and advised eight individuals of municipal code violations. Also completed one hundred and twenty-six security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters. I'm happy to report that the Harbor Trash Services will resume this Friday, June twenty-third.
Yeah.
Kelp pickup will resume the following week. These services will be available daily to the boaters all summer long. The Harbor Department building and Rosie's Fish Market adjacent downstairs, that painting should be completed on schedule this Friday. So we're staying close and working with PLS builders and it looks like we'll be wrapping that up and then putting everything back on the barge Saturday.
Great.
Thank you. Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, city council, Mike Wallagry, Fire Chief. Code's been busy doing tickets and doing, they're helping me get some letters out for Brush. Since we had that late rain, we're really going out this last week and getting some, just talking to the people first and we'll get some letters out to get the Brush weed abatement out and other issues about some sidewalks still that haven't been resolved. And as far as fire, summer's here, we're getting busy. One small boat fire, nothing too much to report on that. Harbor got it pretty quick, it was outside the vessel. We're gearing up for Fourth of July. We'll have all our stuff about fireworks going out off social media tomorrow. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you. Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Sergeant Klein, Avalon Station. Since the last meeting, we've had sixty calls for service, one hundred and nine self-generated observations by the deputies, twelve citations have been issued for unlicensed drivers as well as failure to stop at stop signs. We've had three arrests, one drunk in public and two assaults. We're happy to report, June twenty-fifth, we have two new deputies coming to the island and be permanently assigned. One will be a watch deputy on day shift and one will be a PM shift deputy. They're coming from Carson Station as well as Walnut Station. We also ramping up for Fourth of July, we've got all the extra staff coming as well as six reserves this year.
Great. Any questions?
Could you bring, could you bring the deputies in and introduce them to the...
I will, definitely, yes. They were hand-selected, so we can't wait to bring them in.
Right.
Excellent. No other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. New visitor-driven revenue report was published yesterday on the city's finance page and that covers activity through the month of April. In general, visitor-driven revenues were down about twenty percent from prior year peaks, but thanks to a strong first half of the year and the fact that we didn't budget our revenues to match last year's highs, we're still, should be on track to meet, if not exceed, kind of where we had estimated in developing the budget. Early reporting suggests May will be similarly down, but there's some positive signs that it might not be down by as much as February, March, and April based on some early reporters. So thank you to them for turning in their forms early, so it gives me a peek as to what we can expect. Other than that, the budget's on the agenda tonight as well as a number of finance items. But unless there's any questions.
Okay, thanks.
We can't wait.
One more time and that's it.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. Quick update on one of our Prop sixty-eight per capita project. They'll be starting up at JMF within the end of this month to lay down the concrete pad for the bleachers up at JMF. So just saying we've got at least one of the three down right now. The sun has finally come out and summer is here. This last weekend, we had two major events happen. The VFW had their first sea bass tournament with the side of Halibut. There was eighteen anglers in this first event, the first place sea bass winning eight hundred dollars and second being winning one hundred dollars. First place Halibut was four hundred dollars. They served tacos, a lote, and beer at the Kenapi Park and was able to raise quite a bit of money for their programs. And they're hoping to make this an annual legacy event to take the money and then put them towards the wonderful programs that the VFW funds. There's also this weekend, we had B-Mike Robb Entertainment, the talent scout for America's Got Talent, BET, and So You Think You Can Dance, and also the guy who created the Nae-Nae. He DJed on the stage, creating a fun vibe to our first Summer Saturday to celebrate Juneteenth. Later, he presented his new up-and-coming talents performing on the stage from two to four PM. And he actually, while he was here, discovered a new talent, a visitor who visited the island. She was a ballroom champion, nine-year-old ballroom champion, and he picked her up and is now part of his talent corps. Mike, Big Mike, as he is so affectionately known as, is looking to do more presentations like this on the island. He thinks it's the perfect backdrop for what he's looking to do as a talent scout. Day camp has started and we are fully staffed with five local young adults, creating a fun, active environment for our local and visitor youth ages six to twelve. Our numbers are lower than last year, but they are creeping up due to parents seeing the difference in what's happening outside with the activities. We would also like to remind everyone of our free community events all summer long. Tonight, we have Beach Bingo out on South Beach. Tomorrow morning, seven AM, we are, is the return of our fishing derby. And movies on the beach at eight PM tomorrow. This week's movie is Journey to the Mysterious Island. Should be a good one. The Rock plays a man searching for his father who has supposedly been lost on this mysterious island. Also, on Thursday, we have Beach Bingo again. Fitness Friday, nine AM to twelve PM, that's on Friday. Art in the Park, eleven to three PM. And Sunday are eight AM to ten AM Yoga and Sound Healing. This weekend, I was going to present something, I believe with Jim being here tonight in the chamber, Love Catalina. Pride is happening this weekend. He'll be able, as it's being hosted by the chamber, Jim will probably give a more extensive review of what this weekend looks like. It looks like it's gonna be a fun, fun weekend. There's also been a rumor going around that all coastal fireworks shows have been canceled due to litigations, but that is not affecting our show. Fourth of July is scheduled to be in full swing and your Tony Zeiler Grand Marshall shirts are going on sale tomorrow.
Oh, dude. Yay.
For those people who would like to purchase one online at cityofavalon.com and then buy them as soon as you can, because all proceeds will be going to creating a better Fourth of July. Is there any questions?
I actually did. I had a group of teenagers come up to me wondering if we were gonna fix the timer on the lights for the basketball courts. They said they're used to being out there by ten thirty, eleven PM, and they've been going off by nine, nine thirty.
Okay. I'll have that checked. They need to be off by ten?
Ten, okay.
By ten PM?
And I guess they're going, they're going off at nine forty-five.
Nine forty-five, okay. But I'll double check.
Specifically, they want to be at the basketball courts, which I'd rather have them be there.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions?
Great.
All right, thank you.
City manager, oh, Jocelyn, I'm sorry. I need to put Assistant City Manager.
Really quick, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to let you know that tomorrow we'll be meeting with a potential city consultant on helping with the updating the community-wide survey, income survey. So more to come on that. I'll obviously keep all of you informed and our public as we move forward with that project. Tonight, we're making progress on the landfill expansion project and later on, you'll be receiving a report out from Julie on the one-on-one public outreach that's happening this week. Very exciting. And then the, as you are aware, we have a complaint form posted online now. So if there's any observations by our community on recycling, organics, waste, whether it's commercial businesses, residents, or our hauler, or the city, things that we can do to improve better, it's now online and posted in addition to the email that I notified you, all of the last council meeting, recycle at cityofavalon.com. Thank you so much.
So on the income survey, it seems like one of the discussions or conversations was that could be able to use local people to help gather that information. So yeah, keep that in mind. I mean, that's something I would like to help with, like couldn't anybody else who wants, so, because we know so many people, it might be, might be helpful.
Okay, fantastic. I'll let them know, for sure. Yeah.
Jocelyn, a couple of questions on that survey as well. One, whatever realm of confidentiality there is with that is the only concern I have with local residents being the ones asking those questions. Some people are edgy about giving info if they know someone in town. Some questions came from Selena at Edison regarding the income survey and looking at the details too, so I wanted just to make sure you guys were in touch. And then she had also connected with Jordan about the last income survey and he had some ideas too, so he was gonna forward those to me so I could get them to you, but didn't know if there was a deadline for that, that you needed that info by regarding when you're setting that up and who you're going with.
Yeah, we have a preliminary meeting tomorrow at two. So any information you have before the meeting would be fantastic. But yes, I will, I'll trust the judgment of the experts who do the surveys on whether we should be using local folks or not. And we'll see what they say. And Audra, who was in, you know, a big part of it last time, she'll be in on the meeting as well.
Perfect. Okay, awesome.
I don't know if there's a way to maybe do a tiny little survey, because I know when we did the census, we had a mix of both. We had some locals who were more comfortable talking to locals and felt, you know, trust between that to release information, you know, instead of someone from the mainland.
I think it did bring...
But then it was also the same as Lisa was saying.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can maybe do a little survey and just ask what we feel more comfortable doing.
Okay, yeah, great.
And then the other question as well was just to look at the common people that we generally partner with for grants in terms of what those questions are that we're asking. There was some concern last time and I think Audra has that information too, but just concerned that the scope wasn't either specific enough for certain grant information or broad enough for a variety of grant opportunities, that it was missing some areas that they found to be necessary eventually. So I don't know how we account for all of that, but if you want to try to account for all of that, that'd be great.
All right. I'll do my best.
Thank you, I know you are.
Awesome, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Council Mayor. And we are, I mean, that's something we have talked about, different granting agencies request different information, so we are trying to incorporate all that. That's, it's gonna be a hard task, but I think we can do it. So we're, we're working through that with Bob Greenlaw.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, Bob Greenlaw and Public Works was unable to be with us tonight, so part of my report is gonna also cover some of their items and hit the highlights. So handicap parking painting has started downtown in the Hundred Block. We're going back over that, also some of the other areas. We still do plan on bringing to council at some time in the next few meetings, a overall parking plan for the downtown area. But we didn't want the really faded areas to continue to be neglected, so they started that. They want to get that in place, so if you see that downtown. We will be transitioning over, beginning July first, the Montrose to Perk contract, so they'll be overlapping. Both, both of those groups will be on island transitioning over. Everything so far has gone very smoothly between those two. They're, they're working together. Knock on wood it'll continue that way, but it feels like a good match up to this point. Orin had already mentioned the, the painting at the Harbor Master's office. We do expect that to be completed Friday. I do just briefly want to touch on, we, in addition to the one trash person we had last year, we have six new ones for a total of seven, in addition to Dave Hart's folks, his young folks that he's got working summer camp. It's so nice to see so many young, high school age, young college age kids working back for the city as compared to where we were last year. You see them all over in the morning, they're enthusiastic about what's going on, it's kind of encouraging to see. So we're excited to have all, all those folks working for us and getting them outfitted in boats this summer. Just wanted to mention publicly, the Planning Commission, the June Planning Commission meeting, we had a, a problem with getting the, the paper, having published the notice for, for this week, so we were attempting to continue that to next week. That was unable to happen, which then pushed us into Fourth of July week, and now we have essentially just merged the June and July meeting into July. It's unfortunate, I apologize to those applicants that had something on the June meeting. There were three items for the delay, but I did speak with one today. Unfortunately, much of this was out of, out of our control. But we are, part of that meeting is to bring short-term rental suggestions and options to change, to include into our new legislation or into the legislation. I've had some conversations with Sagecrest on that, also with citizen residents that have concerns both for and against short-term rentals, so I expect that we're gonna be able to come up with some pretty positive suggestions. So that Planning Commission meeting currently is just the, the schedule for the regular July meeting. Next week, we have a special council meeting scheduled for June twenty-seventh at three PM. Right now, two items primarily for that meeting is to award the two oh six East Whitley retaining wall contract, because that bid opening will be this Friday. Also, the second item, which is very exciting for us, is to approve, go forward and hopefully approve the micro-transit vehicle purchase by the end of the month. This will coincide with, tomorrow, we'll have on island an all-electric ADA-compatible Ford van for us to look at and test, which will be, we have a separate grant for two of those vehicles. So fully funded through a separate grant, one's gonna be here tomorrow for us to look at to see if it's gonna work for our needs, and if it does, those two purchases will, will essentially revamp our transit system.
Nice.
Now, the micro-transit vehicles are gonna take some time to get those here and in operation. I mean, twelve to eighteen months is really the timeframe we're looking at, but we have to start now. And thankfully, we have funding for all of that, so that is exciting. And then finally, I just wanted to, well, let me see, here from Bob. Serpentine wall, we have been, Public Works has been tackling portions of that, one at a time, repairing it, painting it. They're doing a great job and we are hoping that this will get us to a point where we can really put in place a long-term maintenance plan for that wall. But they're doing it downtown and, and they're doing a great job on that. And then the only other Public Works item is the award for the ADA Ramp Project is coming soon. We're probably looking at a September project date for that, though we were hoping to get it done this spring. And then finally, just wanted to report out that Senator Lena Gonzalez is gonna be on island this Friday. And I don't know if anybody from council has made arrangements to have touch base with her and her staff, but I'll be meeting with her this Friday, looking forward to that. And that's, that's it from the City Manager's office.
And you're hooked in with me, Mary, on Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I don't know if you guys are going together or whatever. Okay. Well, thank you, that was a lot. When does the city attorney have to report?
Nothing. Hi, Mayor, Council.
Okay, okay. Okay, Councilmember reports.
I'll go first. I won't be here Friday because I will be at my policy committee meeting with the Lake of California Cities in Pomona. And then another item that I would like to discuss at some point, as the boats are bringing over more electric bikes and people are bringing over electric bikes, I would like to see if it's possible for us to do an ordinance requiring anyone on an electric bike wear a helmet, no matter what the age is, because the bike rentals are finding it hard to get their customers to wear a helmet, when all you have, all these people getting off the boat with their bikes and people in town riding around on their electric bikes without helmets. So if it would be possible, if we can bring that back as a discussion. Especially now that they've got, I mean, I saw one today, it was a double seater, and kid on the back and nobody was wearing a helmet. It just, it, and yes, they're a bike, but they have to observe the road, the rules of the road. So, you know, you stay to the right and all that kind of stuff, but they don't stop at stop signs, they run right down the middle of the street. So it's, it's protecting us, it's protecting them, and it's protecting that person who might run into them. You know, it's just, it's, it's just scary, especially on my corner when I hear them screeching around the curb, it just, so.
Then we're gonna need somebody to do helmet rentals, huh? If they, because if they don't know before they get there...
Bike, I know that brown spikes wins helmets. If you need a helmet, yeah.
Oh, good, good. Okay, that's okay with me to bring it back. Okay.
I can go next. This week, Lisa and I, along with Genesis Star, with Barbara Garcia's office, Congresswoman Barbara Garcia, we met with the DC US Postal Service, their government's relations rep, Andrew Jones. We did discuss a couple of things that we're wanting help with in the post office, and we will have a follow-up soon. We don't have an exact date yet, but I know that we made ourselves very loud and clear. I was very proud of us. So they will be coming back with some information and hopefully some solutions as well. I did another financial workshop with Loriann from the US Bank. She had a great turnout, so good job, Loriann.
Oh, good.
And I am doing a broadband webinar tomorrow. I believe I did share the information with Lisa and Jim from Love Catalina. And I also will be meeting with Senator Lena Gonzalez on Friday along with Lisa. And I'm also very excited for Saturday to attend Pride, so thank you, Jim.
Excellent. Well, I just want to comment, you might not have to worry about the postal service if they prioritize it. Was that a discussion?
That was not part of the discussion.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
I did try to ask them to upend their entire system though, so we'll see if it works. I'll go next. So attended the Gateway Cities COG meeting after our last council meeting and also have one tomorrow evening. This is a meeting in lieu of a meeting in July, so it's two in June. Wanted to wish congratulations to Nancy Pfeiffer, who has been the current COG Director, who is retiring, and welcome her replacement, who is Hector De La Torre. Some of you may be familiar with him. I know, look at that face. So Hector De La Torre, a pretty phenomenal guy. If you don't know who he is, I would definitely recommend Googling him. Has a great track record for working for California in general and really excited to have him represent the Gateway Cities, including us. He has already mentioned that he'd like to see if we can budget for this year to have the Board of Directors come here for a meeting in September. I mentioned he might want to also invite all the city managers to come as well, so we'll see if we can make both of those happen. But very excited about that. And sorry to lose Nancy, she's done a lot of great work and gained hundreds of millions of dollars for the port through her work with the COG, which is amazing, both for transit, for the port system and for us, and looking at gathering funds for housing funds too, which is exciting. So a lot of great stuff under her tenure. I had a lot of back and forth with connectivity this, these last couple of weeks in looking at additional grants that are out there for different entities to go after and helping secure letters of recommendation. Thank you especially to city staff for doing a very last-minute letter of recommendation. I really appreciate it. Still working on getting that going and just gonna keep on going, they're not gonna get rid of me. So attended graduation, was very nice, was succinct at ninety minutes, it was impressive. Had the meeting with the postal service, asked them to upend their entire way of doing things, asked them to add a second address line that would be legally recognized across all systems. Thanked them profusely for Margarita and her staff and what they're doing. Might have mentioned we somehow get mail because of illegal practices and that's okay and we're fine with that for right now. See what happens. Had a number of people ask me about the happenings at the hospital. We don't have any purview, unfortunately, over hiring and firing at the hospital. I will say that I am beyond devastated at the loss of local residents, being available to residents, especially the long-term care residents that are there, and have a number of frustrations with the choices that were made in that aspect. I would love it if the hospital and/or the board and/or the CEO or team would love to come up and explain why they made the choices they did to the community. I don't know if that's ever gonna happen. I understand there's a number of reasons why things happen the way they do, and I know that it's not as simple as a decision made and decision requested and a choice made. But am fully uniquely aware, after having had both my dad receive service there for a number of years and my niece receive service there for a number of years, knowing how much extra the people who live here do for the people that live here. And to lose the knowledge that you're gonna have someone look out for you in Long Beach or Torrance or wherever you're going, because while the nurses that are going to be here on the staff, I'm sure are perfectly trained and adequate, do not have the background or the extra moment to take to say so-and-so's coming over, they're feeling anxious or nervous, please watch out for them. I've experienced that and seen how much calming that can have over people and to know that that part of the knowledge is being lost because of this decision is both heartbreaking to me and frustrating. So all of that to say that I want to thank the people who were amongst those that are no longer working for the hospital for their years of service. There's a lot of reasons why it's a challenging, challenging decision they made and the hospital made, but I will say that their years of service should not go unrecognized, and so for that, I am thankful. And I'll let you go.
That was very nice, Lisa.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just piggyback on that too. I'm very disappointed in the decision that came down. It was actually according to my friends, I'm very close with a lot of the people that worked at the hospital, and it was just like crickets, no communication. So I, I'm, I'm really sorry that that, that happened, because now we are forced to deal with travelers, dealing with traveling nurses, and there's, there's not only the personal touch that, that the local residents had, there's a major cost difference. So we lost six really great employees and now we're gonna have to be paying like almost three times as much. And then, you know, when you, even when you walk into a new restaurant, if you're a bartender, you know, even if you've got like twenty years' worth of experience attending bar, every bar is different, you know, and so you need to come up to speed. So that's what these travelers are, are dealing with. And, you know, they've been there all along, a few of them all along, but there was always one of the, the people there that had been there for twenty-plus years to help them get up to speed, and now there's not that either. So I think it's a critical situation for the people in Avalon, and I hope that the, the board and the CEO or the powers that be, I hope can come to some sort of way to figure this out and get some kind of care to the level that we used to have with, with all these people. So anyway, there's my two cents with that too. While we're talking about the hospital as well, I have several people that are still talking to me, Jack Tucci being the most vocal, but they're still talking to me about the possibility of dialysis on the island in the new hospital, when and if that happens. So I did some research and I looked into the major companies and I, Davida, I just started with Davida, and Davida does partner with hospitals and in programs and all that stuff. So I sent them an email and laid out exactly what's going on here, you know, and a lot of statistics, and just asked them if it was in the realm of feasibility to partner with our hospital and see if we can get dialysis here. So I haven't heard back from them yet, but I just sent it off late last week, so we shall see what happens with that. But I did go to the VFW tournament and it was a blast. There was, the radio station was broadcasting live, which is always good to hear, because, you know, the radio station needs listenership, and with listenership comes funding and all of that kind of stuff, and it was great. There were kids out there, there was great food and playing around and, and live music, so that was really, really fun. And then my little granddaughter got a little restless and wanted to go see what was going on on the stage, so we went to the Big Mike thing and... on on the stage, so we went to the big mic thing, and he was hilarious and very encouraging to anyone of any age to get up there and do whatever you want. So, it's great that he thinks that this is a great place to come and scout talent, and so my granddaughter and a little friend of hers were up there dancing, and so he put on Cocoon Melon tunes for them and all this kind of stuff, and it was hilarious. And then, some young woman, young girl, she was like 12 or something like that, she got up and she sang something and it blew him away, and she was really good. I think her name was Natalie or something like that. But he's like, "Yeah, we'll talk offline. I want you to come to America's Got Talent." So, so it's kind of cool that that kind of stuff is happening in our backyard. So, thanks, Dave, for getting them over here and all that stuff. It was a heck of a lot of fun. So, and talking about just safety concerns that the community has, people have expressed concern over rental carts coming down off of Hogsback, you know, taking that little tour up there and then winding down and coming down right, you know, to Beuteloo. And for some reason, there's a perfectly good stop sign right there, and for some reason they don't see it. There are so many accidents when they turn to go onto Marilla.
Ed, thank you for saying that, because that reminds me of, we have no street signs here in front of the country club, of the country club. So...
Oh, right.
All day long, we have rental golf carts going into Eucalyptus Gardens, but there's no street sign saying that this is Banning Drive and that country club goes around. And it just dawned on me the other day, when I thought, "We don't have a street sign. Maybe if we had a street sign, they would get it that they go that way and not that way."
It's really, it's really difficult, though, because, you know, I work out at Edison out of Pebley Beach, and so there's that right that you take to go up to Mount Ada, but inevitably they go straight to the dump. And it's like, we have put so many signs up there, and now there's a really good sign up there now that's yellow that says, "No rental golf carts beyond this point." And I was out there today, and I saw three people go right through it. So, I don't, I don't know what we can do about the Beuteloo situation, although Pixie did have an idea that, you know, perhaps that, okay, Beuteloo goes like this, and then there's that Upper Street that peels off that goes up by Mike King's house and Packy's old house and that. Possibly put a stop sign there, or at least a merge sign, you know, saying, "Okay, there could be traffic coming here." So, if we could stop them a little further up the hill, you know, before they get to that turn, because I myself have witnessed two rollover golf carts, and I live on the street over. I can hear them and I see them, and it's really super dangerous. So, anyways, that's about it for me. Cheery sunshine.
Well, I was on vacation for a week in Texas, so that was all fun. And I've witnessed some of the stuff that's been going on in town, and that's all great, but other than that, I don't have anything to report. So, we will have oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. And, you know, I think between Dave and our wonderful librarian, I think they're competing for their comedic showmanship. They're both very entertaining.
I'm nothing, I'm nothing. But funny about the Cocoon Melon, you mentioned Cocoon Melon? I was doing Storytime at the time they were doing the thing on Read Lisa, and suddenly Cocoon Melon started blasting down the streets. All the kids were going, "Cocoon Melon, Cocoon Melon!" Made it, I don't do Cocoon Melon.
It's cute.
I could, come to think of it. But we do do the Summer Discovery Program. I'm Paul Bertral, Avalon Library, thank you, everybody. The Summer Discovery Program, the libraries attempt to keep people reading all summer, like there's nothing better than reading all summer. Read. Come to the library, I've got game cards, read three books, do three activities. We've got books, we've got little Prezzi's and things like that. The books are better than the Prezzi's. Prezzi's are not so good, but we've got books. Coming up this week for Pride, we're going to make, I think, a little Pride flags with a glossary of what each line of the flag stands for. Also, I've got, still got some of my famous Elton John sort of glasses that you can decorate with feathers and stickers, looks really cool. Today, we were making constellation greeting cards. That was kind of fun. The July schedule is out, we're gonna have some fun things coming up, mostly having to do with the Summer Discovery Program. We're gonna do optical illusions on July 18th. We're gonna make little things that you can put together and look at, and they sort of float together like this. We're going to have exploring colors with balloon painting for teens, pointillism painting on July 28th. We just got the little baby canvases and lots of paint, we're gonna do that. We're still doing Games Day on Wednesdays from 4:00 to 6:00. Very fond of our Games Day. Sometimes you get quite a few people playing games, sometimes it's just me, pretty much playing Solitaire, but that's okay. Still doing Smarty Pants Storytime every Saturday at 11:00 AM. We have one concert coming up on Friday, July 21st. We're having a visit from the great guitarist Craig Newton, who's going to be playing a concert of all California folk songs and rock songs. It's gonna be quite lovely. That's Friday, July 21st. That's thanks to the Friends of the Library Group. They've also given me a very nice donation for me to book programmers in August and September coming up, so I'll talk more about that in the months ahead. I do know we've managed to hook the Barnstall Art, Barnstall Art Museum's junior teaching artist to come over in August. That's a bit away now, but that's gonna be amazing. They do really intricate world art, and everybody makes them, you know, plaster gargoyles or dragons, you know, from paper, you know, fold-out objects. They're amazing. That's gonna come in August, and if you have a good memory, we used to have Make Mo, the science librarian, who would come out twice a month, sometimes with robots, sometimes just with something, you know, STEMI. They're gonna start coming back. I think they may be coming back at the end of July, maybe early August, but we're on their rouda of coming out and doing STEM, and they're gonna hopefully come out every month, so we'll have a little more STEM at the library. I think that's all I'm gonna give you now. Oh, Off the Island Book Club, The Lifeguards by Katie Hayes, that's going to be Thursday, July 25th. Was going to do The Gunkle for this month, nobody's come to check it out, so I guess we're not gonna do that. But next month, Off the Island, The Lifeguards by Katie Hayes, New York Times Bestseller. I've got enough copies coming. Please, come to your library. Support the library. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, can I ask a quick question while Bryce is coming up? Paul, on the 21st, what time is the concert for Craig Newton? Is that four?
Four AM.
Okay. And then, for anyone who is an adult or has children or teens with them, that Make Mo services are really cool. I learned how to make a robot, I learned how to code to make a musical instrument. There's some actually very entertaining and helpful things that you can do with that, so, yeah, thank you.
Bryce, well, I had intended to come up and talk about a bunch of things, but you guys asked for a member of the hospital, and I am here. What do you want to know?
What's up, Bryce?
Well, it's been, it's been a long several weeks.
Yeah.
And it is not our policy, as we are a private organization, to discuss employment matters in a public forum. Please know that we take employment very seriously, especially with individuals that have worked at the hospital for a very long time. One of the things that I can tell you is that since I have taken over as assistant hospital administrator, that there's not been a single individual that has been fired from our facility. I can also tell you that we do everything in our power to ensure with limited resources that we pay people to the best way possible. We instituted a wage increase at the beginning of the year that is gonna cost us about another half a million dollars a year, to try to bring our employees up to the 50th percentile. As of the beginning of the year, we had 50 employees that were underneath the 50th percentile, and we have reduced that number down to 34 while bringing people up to the pay that they should. Any other questions?
Um, I understand, geez, I'm sorry. I understand there was not a lot of communication between administration and workers, just kind of a silence and a, "Okay, then."
It is not our policy to discuss employment matters in public forums.
And I totally understand that, Bryce.
I do, too.
But one of the things that is, should be very important to know in a small town like this, is the difference between employers and employees, is that we can't go around and tell the truth. So, there have been multiple members of the community that have come to me with information that is not correct, so...
So, are you gonna be forthcoming with any, you know, any kind of generic overview or something to soothe the hurt, the people that are upset in this town, because it's not just two people sitting up here, there's a lot of people in town? So, are you gonna, are you gonna put out anything, you know, kind of explaining?
Our lawyers would tell me absolutely not, but I'm sure you guys know that already. Again, this is a, this is a private business, having an employment matter, and we do not discuss that in a public forum or setting in any way. I can tell you that there has not been a single minute, that there has not been a nurse covering, and that the quality of our nurses, I have met every single last one of them, and the ones that remain are fantastic and extremely qualified.
I think I'm just curious to know, especially in circumstances in the wintertime, when you don't have someone that is necessarily living here to cover certain aspects, especially emergency room care, how it is that you're staffing up for that and getting a report on that? I think that's reasonable to ask for. I think it's also reasonable to ask why it is that it's affordable to do a half a million salary for a CEO, but not for an additional percentage for your nurses that are here and have been given services. I think those are reasonable and don't have anything to do with employment, other than to have you guys provide a statement on that. I'm not expecting you to answer it tonight, because I'm sure that you...
I can answer it right now.
Yeah.
So, one, our CEO is not as well-paid as a lot of other CEOs, and I know that the intention has been to drag him through the mud, but he is the longest-tenured CEO that CIMC has ever had. He has led us through a ballot initiative that failed once. He has led us through a pandemic, and we were the most vaccinated community in the world before anyone else was. So, if you go look at hospitals and what hospital CEOs make, it's not the same. He has a master's degree in accounting, and I can tell you the accounting was extremely solid on all the decisions that we have made from an employment standpoint. If there is any point at which we think there is going to be a gap in coverage, we will come and let the community know well ahead of time, but at this time, we do not expect there will be any gap in the level of care that a patient will receive at CIMC.
I'm just gonna throw my two cents in. It's not our purview to tell the school how to staff the school. It's not our purview to tell the hospital how to staff the hospital. I feel bad at the way it played out, but decisions were made and those decisions were followed through with. But these are businesses that we do not have control over, so I... That's just my two cents.
Change is hard, those are my friends, too. So, know that, know that nothing happens in a void, and we very much appreciate that, and it was a lot of missed sleep from everyone involved, trying to see if we could come up with a solution, that it did not end this way, and there was not one.
Michael, I appreciate your comment on that, too. I also will say, though, that there is a reason why we're losing families, we're losing people living here full-time, and it has to do, in large part, with the school, not as much with the hospital, but occasionally with the hospital. There's improvements being made at the school to try to have more on island...
And I, I understand that, but it's not our...
It's not our, we have no control over it. I fully appreciate that, and stated that at the get-go. Again, the decisions are already made, that have been made. I think the issue is that moving forward, if I already have certain friends who have certain illnesses who will not come to the island for a stretch of time or go into the interior for a stretch of time, because they feel like their responsive care for them being at higher risk is something that can be detrimental, and almost nothing to do with how your responses are, literally just because we're on an island and what they have to get for care and what's available here. But if you're now saying that there's the level of care that part of the services include is well-educated, well-provided, but not to the same level of care that it was previously, which I think we can all say is true. I know personally I've experienced it, and it's different going to the ER at night with travel nurses than it is going to the clinic or the ER with people who know you and know your background and history and know what's coming up next for you. It's, it's just different. It's a concern. I'm understanding that you're not gonna say anything about it, and I appreciate you coming up here to be the face of that decision, and I understand the challenge of it, that it is, but it's still a concern, and it's a valid concern, and people are still gonna ask about it and/or be upset about it, so it is what it is.
I would encourage everyone to keep an open mind, and please know that our decisions are made with the best of intentions for the organization and the community at all.
Bryce, I did, I want to thank you, because you're always up here, you know, calm, you know, logic, and I always appreciate that from you. I just, I think for me, it's more of a simple trust, that I know, I know you guys are all qualified and you're doing your job, but most, you know, Avalon's special, and we do everything together, the good and the bad. So, when there's no word, there's less trust, which is what we don't want. So, even if it's a small statement just to clear the air, whatever it has to be, or reach Jason, reach you if you guys want to have individual conversations, or whatever the case may be, but something needs to be done.
I can tell you for sure that there will be no public statement. I would hope at this point that you all trust me, so if anybody wants to come and have an individual conversation, my door is always open. I will still not talk about the employment side of things, but if you guys want to make sure that we're doing our jobs properly, I can definitely speak to that.
I respect you coming up here, now it wasn't easy.
Thank you.
I just want to say this was all under oral communication. Oral communication is typically, no actions taken, so this has been a lot more than would normally be happening, but I think you can understand, and so don't take offense.
I didn't want to interrupt your council reports.
What's that?
I said I didn't want to interrupt your council reports.
Yeah, but, so, I appreciate that, because we took much more time on it, but I appreciate you standing up there and doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any others, Jim?
One more, and I'll be brief, because I've already been here a couple of times, but Dave very nicely set us up for a reminder that this Saturday, beginning at noon, we will be celebrating Catalina Pride with a Pride Walk soon after 12:00 noon, so we'd welcome all of you. If you're available, please to join us on the stage, as we did last year, for kicking off that event and then leading the walk. We will then have DJ Asha and Devon M., and not this Devon, a different Devon M. on the stage, but you're welcome to join us if you'd like.
She can do it.
We'll be joined again by representatives of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and we will have various sponsors have different chances to talk at the mic and share what they're doing. We're very happy that US Bank has come on board for the first time as a corporate sponsor, and they will have representatives from the mainland here as well. We have invitations out to many of our mainland elected officials with fingers and toes crossed that calendars continue to align, as a couple of them look like they are, that they will be able to join us. And we will have entertainment on the stage right up until 9:45 PM, and then after-parties will ensue at the discretion of various business owners, with a planned set of performances going on at both 10:00 and 11:00 at the Chi Chi Club. So, we look forward to hopefully filling the hotel rooms. We do have rooms still available, I checked just before I came up, but it's far fewer rooms than we have been seeing for many weeks, so a good indication that maybe we're turning the tide, not only on the weather, but on consistent summer travel, too. And just one more quick advertisement, officially, our sponsorship opportunities for 4th of July closed yesterday, but in a staff meeting just before I came up here, we kind of decided we could eke just a couple more through, so if somebody has forgotten to hit send on that email, do so now, and we can still get you listed as a sponsor on the official promotional materials for the 4th of July. And if you just want to make a generous donation in any way to support that, you can do so on the City of Avalon's website. And we look forward to switching from Pride to Independence Day on Sunday. We'll start kicking off that. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. All right. Anyone else? Okay. We will have a presentation from Avalon Environmental Services.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I just have a couple of updates today, not a formal presentation. I believe that Jocelyn had mentioned at last council meeting that we would have a team on the island visiting the businesses. And so with me today is our members of our sustainability team in the blue shirts. And our goal is twofold. One, obviously with rolling out the organics and recycling and making sure everyone's doing their part, we decided to bring our five supervisors. So these are the, the cream of the crop that we have. So they, they manage some contracts on the mainland and then each manage a, a group of sustainability team members as well. So Craig, raise your hand, please. Craig Dibley. So Craig came to the island in 2014 shortly after Avalon Environmental took over the contract with the city. And so he had this plan of what they did the last time. Regulations were different back in 2014, but we had the idea rather than just bring one person over, why don't we blitz the town? And so they all came over this morning on the eight o'clock boat and they'll be here till six thirty PM tomorrow. And we have about a little over three hundred businesses and multifamily properties that they'll be visiting. One in part to make sure there's education, meet with the businesses, meet with the multifamily properties, talk to them, talk to them about recycling, recycling food scraps, handing out literature, why they're here, the response. Jocelyn joined us for lunch. We had a regroup already and there was already great feedback. People were very excited. I know that council member, Ponce, has shared and I know Mary has shared her property as well. If the landlord's not getting on board, how are the tenants getting on board? So each of them had all had great feedback that they shared, met with individual people. There's some folks that say, yeah, I don't have it or I need more. Can you please deliver an organic spin? We actually had a restaurant that wants a dumpster for organics. A bunch of restaurants share and they feel that a cart isn't enough. So the feedback so far has been great. Maybe two people have said, ah, I don't want to do that. But for the most part, everyone's been very excited, very open, don't have their food waste pails. I know Craig came to City Hall and grabbed two pails and is going to deliver them for them so they don't have to come to the landfill or come to the office. And so the second piece of that is with the SB thirteen eighty-three legislation, it requires cities to conduct, conduct annual visits to every commercial premise. And again, just to re-educate, do you understand? Do you need any help with the outreach? And so at this point, we're checking the box twice. One, because we still want to make sure we're getting the word out to everybody. And number two, when Jocelyn and I respond to Cal Recycle, we can say, hey, we've done this. We visited every commercial multifamily property, provided outreach, education, whatever is needed. So anyway, it's been great. Like I said, they're going to finish all the properties. Those that for any reason we can't make contact, if we can't make contact with all the multifamily properties or even some of the businesses, Jocelyn and I are working together to send a letter and we're going to do what we call, and we do this with a lot of cities on the mainland, auto enrollment. So we'll give them one more chance. It says you have thirty days to call us and request your containers to be compliant with the state legislation, but if not, based on the assessments being done today, we will just automatically deliver them a cart or a, for recycling or a cart for organics if we don't hear from them and do our own rightsizing. Once usually that pops up on the premise, they'll usually call us after that, which is fine. And then we can walk through it and we can talk to them. So it's been great. I will also share that Jocelyn had mentioned to me on the phone, we have a bi-weekly meeting and she had mentioned about the complaint form, which is also part of SB thirteen eighty-three. And I always thought, who's going to do that? Who's going to call and tattle on somebody and say, hey, my neighbor? And she had shared that we had one and then one of our sustainability leads also had one today that they were kind of tattling on our neighbor about not breaking down boxes. So.
Yes.
People do do it and I guess, you know, there was a reason Cal Recycle thought we had to have this. But anyway, so it's, it's been, it's been great. It's been great so far. It's nice being out in this beautiful day. On the mainland, we're not seeing a whole lot of sun either. So it was a great day to be out here. And then I also as well during the Fourth of July event will have a booth and I will have Adriana. She's our new office administrative clerk that's there and she'll be working the booth with me. So we'll have pails and cards and flyers and brochures. So I will be here out on the Fourth of July and then obviously stay for the fireworks. I'm glad they're still going to be here, the firework festivities. So that'll be fun. And that's my update for now.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Or comments or whatever. And I, and it's something that we need to, getting recycle bags and compostable bags, it seems to be difficult. And different sizes, like when it fits in the little containers there. And then I guess when you're talking about organics and whatever and the big green ones, which I don't have, they just throw that in there? That's not in a bag? That's just in a dirty old trash can?
You can do it loose or you can bag it.
Okay.
Either one.
Okay. If somebody would visit the golf course, because they have a number of trash cans along the course and it's just one, and there's a lot of beverages that are consumed up there. So if you can make sure you kind of keep them in the circle. Also the vacation rentals, because you have a, I think there's a situation with people that they don't own the homes. It's just the, so we have two vacation rentals, CIVR and Hamilton Cove, and see how we can get them on board as well. Because there's a number of, I don't know, number of units up at Hamilton Cove and I, I just don't think that that's really happening there unless you are a resident.
Okay. Jocelyn and I could work on this. Maybe some notification or as they turn hands, that there's something on the counters.
Right. Yes. Those are my only little things right now, but go ahead.
Yes, because the gentleman back there came to visit me at the Seacrest today and we talked about vacation rentals. And I guess you have vacation rentals in.
Newport Beach, we do a lot.
No, no, I mean, the, the way you've got them categorized here, not as businesses, but as residential. We really need to get that information out to whoever is managing those properties. Because on Clarissa across the street, I'm not sure if it's a vacation rental or not, but whoever was there this last weekend with a swan, their, their garbage is still sitting there because they filled every garbage can with garbage and recycling isn't, that isn't, you know, it's nothing separate. It's just, but I, I'm not sure if it's still there right now, but I know that yesterday it was. But we need, we really need to get that kind of outreach out to at least the property management companies.
Sorry. We'll work on that.
Yeah. But I had a real nice discussion, so.
Just a question. I appreciate the work you're doing both with the businesses and the shared facilities. The, we did have a resident, Leslie Warner, if you don't mind, I'll just read a section of an email that she sent me and I apologize. I have not forwarded this to you guys.
We got it.
It came, we got it, but I don't know if city staff got it.
I sent it to Dave.
Did you?
Yeah, Dave's got it.
It just had to do with them asking for those who are picking up waste to look under lids. They used their old round trash cans because they didn't feel the need to get new cans. But if the lids are on them, then the staff that's collecting trash is not checking under lids and it's been green waste as well. So she's wondering if it's possible to have that happen, especially for round lids, to make it a habit to check as opposed to not check?
Okay.
Is that something that can be?
Yeah, it is. Yeah. If you can just forward, have Jocelyn forward it to me, then I'll talk to Carmelo and the staff.
And then I don't know, I was wondering if you had an idea of what the percentage of compliance for residential is currently. Is there any way that you're checking that currently or is that not something that we're looking at yet?
So it's something that we want to do. So we wanted to try to get the business sector on schedule, but then what we would do is kind of old school language, but we cut, we call it.
Lid flipping, right?
So we'd actually have the drivers kind of click participation. So we know that we have approximately thirteen hundred homes that we do collection from. So this is the way we used to do it, you know, many years ago, but for Avalon, I think it still kind of fits that the driver has a clicker and for everyone that has recycling or organics out, they would click for every stop. So that would give us a good idea as far as participation. So we have not done that yet, but we definitely plan on doing that.
Okay. If we can get an update on that, I just, I'm curious to see what the actual buy-in and there's people that ask about what, how do I sort this? What does that go under? So we look at the chart together and try to figure it out if it's not labeled. But just trying to make sure that we're not only asking residences and multifamily locations, but also individual residents as well. Vacation rentals, I know it's half and half right now. I feel like half of California is doing great at it and half of California has literally no idea. So thank you for keeping up on it.
I agree with you. I will say that we get a lot of residents though that same thing, they want to keep their old container, but they have their recycling label faded, it's gone. And so, gosh, we drop, drop some off to Jocelyn on a regular basis where people come to City Hall and they want the new recycling label and they'll just put it on their cart themselves just to remind them because it's got the pictures, it's English, Spanish, it gives them an idea. So I send some over on a regular basis over to the landfill and then we drop some off to, to her as well. So I think that's part of it, which is great.
Okay. I'll ask her if she can get some labels too. That'd be great.
And then just one other thing. You have a volunteer over here, Jim with the chamber who's willing to work with you guys to getting information out, so.
Great. Thank you.
It's funny though. I got like a, I got a cross in between both of what you said, like that one didn't get picked up and this one because the lids are, okay. So when we first started this, we talked with my landlord. He did not want the things with the lids, you know, so he's opting to keep the fifty-five gallon trash cans. So he painted a, a blue rim around the ones that are supposed to be recycled. And when I came up to get labels a while ago, we were out of the recycled ones, but we probably have some now, so I'll slap those on there. But, you know, so there's no labeling on them and I think that people up the street from me are using our cans as well, you know, which people tend to do. So our trash just overflows and every single Tuesday and every single Friday, they pick up everything. Organics and everything. Organics is supposed to be, organics and recycling is supposed to be Friday and trash is supposed to be Monday. But I don't, I don't see how they could just not pick up everything because of the way that the trash is just completely overflowing. And so I hope that they have on non-organic days, I hope that they have some sort of a bag that they can dump it into. I hope they're not just taking the pail that happens to be sitting there and dumping it in something else. You know, so I don't know what's happening there. But so we, we still need some tweaking, Julie. We're working at it.
That's okay. I will share that. Like I said, I, I have your address and I'll talk to Carmelo and we'll, I'll ask him to look through it. And I think the same thing again, but you just have the overflow. I don't know if it's the case where they are checking or seeing that everything's just all mixed together and that's why they're just dumping it. I know that we've seen a lot more and Jocelyn has shared and confirmed, we're doing a lot more tagging. So if you have stuff out on the opposite day that they're not picking up and they're still, you'll see a lot more of the tags on the containers, but I'll do some follow-up. That thing with the lids, I wasn't, that was new to me about old lids, different colors. And so I will talk to them because that was, that was news. I'm not aware of that.
He's the only one that painted one blue, I'm sure, in the whole town.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sure he did, yeah. But also I, I did utilize the report a problem thing on the website and I attached a picture so you can see how incredibly overflowing it is. And I feel for the guys in the trucks, you know, because how can you tell? It's, it's, it's everywhere. And people are not putting the recyclables in the blue ones. They're, it's my street where I am, it's, I can absolutely see that they are not doing it. My blood boils. But I don't know how to, I don't know how to get a, to get a rain in on it.
Well, and it's up and down, especially I think because we're both in an area where it's much more condensed. The volume of trash is easily visible, that it's ridiculously high those days. I still think we're running into the same issue. It's, it's not, by not having it twice a week, it's causing an issue and we've barely begun to see the start of vacation rentals being fuller and having more people in them versus just the owner or the owner and someone else.
Yeah, right. But my place is essentially twice a week.
Yours is twice a week because they are picking it up.
Twice a week.
Right. But it's because it's necessary.
Right.
If they left it there or tagged it and left it there, which we've had happen once to us when we first got started, that was a whole other mess because then now I'm having to wait a whole extra week.
Yeah, I'm not advocating wait. Go ahead and pick it up.
Don't wait. Like you can tag, if you can pick it up and tag it still.
Sure.
But that's, it's, 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 there's not enough space to hold that much trash.
Yeah, I, I, I. It's a tough one.
I'll talk to Carmelo, but we'll, we'll come up with some ideas.
And I have one other question. It's more of a city question. When our contractor picks up out of our two cans, is he doing, is Eddie Vega doing recycling and then did it, or how's that working out? Because there's a hundred and fifty trash cans out there or something.
Yeah, so we're utilizing blue bags for recycling and clear white, I can't, or black, something for the, black, for the waste portion of it. And so I was just talking to Carmelo actually today on how we can improve making it more streamlined as far as our contractor dropping it off at the landfill to make it more efficient process to ensure the recycling's going where it needs to go and the, the waste is going where it needs to go.
All right, great.
Yeah. And then one of the other things related to one of the other questions that you guys were asking, Julie and I were talking about the tonnage reports. So with this, all this outreach happening, some of the new carts and the dumpsters and things that we'll be getting and rolling out in July, we'll be able to show what's being shipped off island. So hopefully, you know, May will have some information in there and come September, hopefully there's a huge increase of what's being shipped off island, so.
And Jocelyn, the, the blue bags that you utilize, are they recyclable or are they plastic?
They are plastic, but it's all shipped off island and.
They have a bag breaker that pulls it out.
Yeah.
So they deal with that.
Okay. Now I get confused because the last time you were here, you said if it's in plastic, we have to throw it all away because you can't recycle the bag.
Not the grocery store ones. So the bags, the, the blue bags at the city, the blue bags, they have to be blue, the blue bags. So the, the organics has to be compostable because that just is chipped right at the landfill.
Right.
It goes right to the landfills, but chipped. The blue bags, they have a blue bag, it is made of a different material and we have a bag breaker that goes when we take it to Stanton and, and they will, it will be pulled out. But when it gets pulled out, it does go to the landfill.
So where can we purchase those?
Well, so the, the city is using the, the City of Avalon is using those blue bags as a mechanism for our contractor to keep track of what's recycling and what's not recycling. So when he takes it to the landfill, it's easy, you know, when he's, when him and his employees are taking it out of the truck to the landfill, it's easily.
Sure.
Identifiable.
Gotcha. But so normal residents in town, they're using a GLAD trash bag to put their recycles in. So then that won't work. You will just throw that in the landfill.
That goes to landfill because you can't see what it is. You don't see what it is.
So how do we?
And we, we prefer no bag or the paper bags that you get at Bons. That's the best thing because that's all made of cardboard.
Okay.
For the recyclables.
I would just say that I use, GLAD has blue bags. So they are available on the mainland that you may be able to find them, but they are, they're extra. They're twice the biggest of white bags, but they're specially made for recycling. So it's GLAD recycling and they're, they're clear blue.
Clear?
Bons make them. If not, they should, we should ask that they supply them. Because they are available at grocery stores.
Julie, is this information you're going to be sharing July fourth in your booth?
Yes. Yeah, I can bring, I'll bring some, I'll bring some samples. The whole issue is if we can see what it is, but when it's a, a white, like a kitchen bag or, you know, like the, the ones I buy, I know I buy them at Costco or Target, but the, the kitchen bag or the black hefty bag, you can't see what it is. So the assumption has to be it's trash. So if it's a clear recyclable bag that you can see through and as Scott mentioned, which is good, I didn't know GLAD. I know you can buy them on Amazon, similar to the organics bags you can buy. If it's clear and we can see through it, then we'll take it and the bag will break at our Stanton facility.
So I bought some off Amazon that are white.
Is it clear?
They're opaque, but they're white, but it does say compostable.
If you can see through it, it's fine. As long as the driver can see the material, can see that it's got plastic bottles and, and food cans or whatnot, it's okay. They got to be able to see through it to see that it's not, because otherwise they're going to assume it's probably just a trash bag.
Wow.
Even though it says compostable all over it.
Um, Jocelyn, you've been doing such a good job on social media. Could we also put that on there?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Cool. Other questions, comments?
I was going to ask for the apartment complexes, are we going to do a waste dumpster or are we going to be giving them trash bins?
It's, it's what, it comes down to space constraints. So whatever. I mean, we would prefer for, at least for recycling, not organics for recycling, we'd prefer dumpsters because obviously people are getting cardboard or shipments or stuff, obviously. You can't put a whole lot for an apartment complex. If there is an issue with a space constraint, we could deliver two to three of the ninety-six gallon recycle carts for them, but our desire would be recycled dumpster, the metal or plastic bin if, if they have the space.
Okay. And will you guys be visiting the sites or?
Yeah. No, we'll be visiting. That's part of it. We'll do the outreach and then we'll come visit, we'll visit again and we'll send them literature and everything. And then we have huge recycling stickers that go all over the, the dumpsters as well.
For, just two more questions for me. For planning ahead for both building and new construction.
construction, is it possible to get measurements, like a one-page infographic if you already have it?
We have that, yes.
For the planning department to be able to provide, so they know when to plan for that. And then the other one's gone, so that's it. Okay.
And Devin, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we missed somebody in oral communications.
Oh. I'm sorry, Chuck Martin.
Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina. I know garbage is important, just ask Pam. But I'm here to talk about the hospital. I totally agree with Lisa and Mary on the community's feelings on what happened. I kind of disagree with Michael. You know, we shouldn't be able to sell schools what books to have either, but as times are changing and things like that are happening. You know, the, I've had a talk with the gentleman who was up here earlier and I disagree with a lot of things that he said. I'm not gonna, you know, everything he talks about is, I can't tell you about that. That's a secret, I can't tell you. Well, you know what, you're talking about a bunch of people here that are concerned about our nurses. I was, as you probably know, the first person on the island and my wife to have COVID. And had not somebody on the island who knew me and called Pam and said, I'm medevac-ing Chuck over now. And I told Pam, this is stupid. I'm fine, you're fine, we'll be okay. And she said, no, he's going. I went and had I not gone, I'd be having dinner with Dr., with Father Bill right now because I would have died. But because somebody on the island who knew me cared and took care of me. Now, I'm not saying that the nurses that come over here or the travel nurses are bad people. I'm saying that the people that are here know us and they care about us and they watch after us. I asked about this, it's, this is not about money. That's all we got from them is, no, it's about money. We can't afford $500,000. And Lisa brought up the fact of what our CEO makes. I checked salaries on CPOs today. They're not even close to what our CEO gets, not even close. So look it up, Bryce. Look up what the salaries are in California for CEOs. We're locked into a CEO here and a board of directors. But we're the community here, we're the people that live here. We should at least be able to say, hey, let's negotiate this thing. And I know that the people involved, the nurses, will negotiate, I know that. But I was told that, no, it's beyond negotiable. I know they shouldn't have quit, a bad idea, they did quit, but it's still, anything's negotiable. You know, I ran a major computer operation for Continental Airlines, negotiating is important. And it's not the money, it's the appreciation that the, that the hospital has for these, all they talk about is money. And all they were told is, well, I'm going to review this thing. Have you reviewed it? No, I'll get back to you tomorrow. I'm going to review this thing. It was already a done deal. He just put it off and put it off. Finally wrote a letter saying, no, here's why I can't do it. The whole thing is bad. Bottom line, they should negotiate this thing. And I know, the nurse, one of them is not even in the country anymore and she communicated to me from Ireland, disappointment in this whole thing. So I think it can be worked out. And for him to tell me it is absolutely beyond any of our control, whose control is it then? Can't tell you. Well, come on, you can't tell me. Somebody needs, I wish more people would have come here and talked about it because there are a lot of them. You know, I put a thing in the local Facebook, it did get, it got a lot of likes, a lot of likes, but not a lot of attention. And I think that most of you up there agree with what's going on. And most of you would like to see a change. And I think that somebody needs to start doing something, do some talking. Get him and his boss back here. You know, I mean, and if you need to have figures on salary or figures on, we're way paid way more than, well, I mean, the numbers going around about what we have to pay these travel nurses is horrendous. Got to pay them a high salary, we got to pay their boat fare, we got to pay for their room and board and their meals. You know, they make that decision and we have nothing to say about it. But somehow, it's our money and somehow we're paying extra for tickets on Catalina Express so that this wonderful hospital can be built. And I know as well as anybody, we need to do something by 2030, but getting rid of the nurses because they want to have a little appreciation and a better life is not the answer. Anyway, that's my two cents.
I appreciate your two cents. Thank you very much, Chuck. Okay. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, minutes, approval of the minutes from the June 6, 2023 regular council meeting. Number two, approve the total expenditures for May 29, 2023 through June 9, 2023 totaling $1,209,895. Item three, findings to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Item four, GAN appropriations limit for fiscal year 2324, asking council to adopt a resolution committing $1 million from the city's general fund, undecided fund balance of the city's capital reserve fund, Fund 106, and adopt a resolution approving the annual GAN limit, GAN appropriations limit calculation for fiscal year 2324. Item five, the annual law enforcement service agreement with Los Angeles County. Item six, resolution approving application for TDA Article 8 funds. And item seven, city manager employment agreement merit increase.
Can I please ask to pull out consent calendar, item five, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much.
I'll move to approve items one through four and six through eight on the consent calendar.
Through seven?
Through seven.
Sorry, one through seven, my bad.
I'll second.
I got excited.
Please second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
I wanted to pull item five, just I have a resident who would like to voice concerns and or questions, so I want to give him the opportunity to do so.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I stand before you today deeply concerned about the reoccurring law enforcement services agreement with Los Angeles County. Year after year, this contract is brought before us from the final meeting of June, just days before the start of our busiest time and the beginning of the city's budgeted year. This timing leaves little room for community input and discussion or exploration of alternatives. It is disheartening to witness such a crucial decision made without adequate time for analysis and evaluation. Furthermore, it is alarming to note that the cost of the contract has been increased, increasing by double-digit percentages annually, while we do not witness a corresponding increase in service or inflation. As responsible stewards of the city's finances, these exorbitant hikes should be questioned and the city should demand justification for such significant year-over-year increases. Where is the evidence of the increased level of service or the outline of the cost increases that warrants such a staggering financial burden? The 1% increase for the additional of a half of a deputy does not justify this double-digit annual narrative. In the past, a simple pay code error was discovered within the law enforcement contract that saved the city around $200,000. It was a substantial sum of money that could have been utilized to address other pressing needs. However, instead of using the savings to benefit the community at large, it was unanimously approved to supplement the fire department's over budget and overtime pay, which was already approaching a million dollars. This decision raises concern about the allocation of funds and the prioritization of our financial resources. I want to emphasize that my intention is not to advocate for defunding the police or the fire department. Rather, I believe in holding our largest city contracts accountable for the significant amounts invested each year. It is our responsibility to ensure that the community receives value and benefits from these agreements. In times where we are requesting residents to reduce water usage or make cuts to essential programs like Meals on Wheels, it is essential that we thoroughly scrutinize and address the substantial expenses associated with these contracts. Considering the escalation cost, escalating costs and the lack of transparency and outlining the basis for these increases, it is imperative that we explore alternative solutions. Perhaps it is time for the city to consider establishing its own contract services, forging strategic partnerships with our major stakeholders. This approach could potentially lead us to self-sustaining and yield significant financial benefits in the long run, allowing the city of Avalon to regain control of our own destiny. In conclusion, the law enforcement contract requires immediate attention and scrutiny. By maintaining the current stance, the true offense is in Avalon lies in ongoing exploitation of the contract services, which relentlessly, relentlessly drains the city's resources year after year, all while we passively observe its occurrence. I urge the city council to thoroughly examine the justification for these annual increases and evaluate alternative options that could result in substantial savings for the community. The citizens of Avalon deserve informed decisions by the city that prioritize fiscal responsibility without compromising public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Carl.
Dave, I actually did have a question. I don't see him anymore. But when I was looking through it, I know that I noticed throughout the years that the, what is it, the liability percentage has increased.
Yes.
And I just was wondering what is covered by that? Because it's gone up now, what, 11 to 12?
It's increased one percentage point to 12% on the liability, year over year.
So kind of how the contract's structured is we have the five and a half deputies that have a fixed rate per deputy. And then on top of that, there's an overhead charge for insurance. So anytime there's a case against, say, and I don't want to say our sheriffs, but excessive force or any types of things that would lead to litigation, those don't go through the city's general liability insurance. Those are covered by the sheriff's department. And so a portion of the contract goes to cover those increased costs. Insurance speaking, generally not specific to the sheriff's contract, have gone up by double digits kind of across the board. If you look at our transit contract insurance, if you look at our city's general liability insurance, there's a number of factors behind that.
Well, that was, it was good and sad.
There's a number of factors that led to the increases in insurance, higher settlements is part of it. On property damage side, higher, more valuable property. So when there's destruction or damage to property, there's higher payouts for property damage. The insurance, it's, if you look at our other insurance at the city, it's going up by double digits and it's just kind of a trend in the market. I can say we do evaluate the cost of the sheriff's contract and I confidently can say we could not provide the level of service they provide for the amount they are charging us.
Thank you, Matt. I think I just want to make sure that if we're approving this, because there has been concerns from the community, and I believe it has been for the last, God knows how many years, that there's just more community involvement, which I have seen them already start to do. But things like, I know I've mentioned in meetings before, domestic violence, mental health services, you know, how our chefs be trained within that. Because although I know that they have been in life-threatening situations on the island already, I just want to make sure that when they do deal with those types of situations, that they have the proper verbiage on how to deal with, you know, victims. Because that's, it makes a huge difference. And that's something that I want to make sure that is covered in this contract.
And I just want to say, I mean, like Matt said, we evaluate not only the sheriff's contract, but all of our outside contracts routinely. I mean, we're keeping an eye on these things and constantly reevaluating whether or not we can do a better, cheaper job internally with our own staff and making those decisions. And we do that with this contract and with all the other contracts. I can tell you.
Have you had conversations with strategic partners? Or have you, have you had conversations with?
Carl, he's speaking right now.
Right. Have you had conversations with the contract? Because as far as I'm concerned, they don't even come to the island. They don't sit at the table. So the point of my conversation was not, I know all of you guys are going to vote yes on this, because the contract, we have to have sheriffs here on 4th of July. The point of my conversation is, it's coming to us, the council meeting, right before the contract is due and right before the busiest time of our year. So there's no discussion ever made. So to have that discussion, and I'll sit down with you and I'll give you some ideas, because if you, if we partner with the other people that pay the contract as well in this, on this island, we could definitely save a lot of money. And we could have twice as many of the staff. And I could show you how it's going to be done. And I've talked with people in the courtrooms and in the law enforcement, they'd say it can be done. We don't have to be beholden to this contract anymore. And I know that every year this comes up to us. And we feel like we're beholden and we have no other option. So let's just sign it and move on with the year.
Well, to your point, if something like that were to happen, there's some, be some big changes, it's nothing that could be implemented. I appreciate what you're saying. But if truly, if you have some ideas, because it would take some time to.
I've had some ideas for some years and I would love to sit down with the two women that run this town. I would love to do that.
Yeah, so that's my.
If you're listening out there, Allison. All right?
I don't know who you're talking, okay, thank you.
If I could, just finish. I mean, this isn't something that we're bringing at the last minute. We're bringing it because contracts have lifespans. They have begin dates and end dates, and that's routinely when we bring them. Over the last year, I mean, we can talk about this, this isn't just the deputies that we see. We had an incident this last year and thank goodness, we don't have a lot of them. But we did have an incident this last year where they, we had to lean on those resources from LA County sheriffs. And they brought them all here in full force. And it resolved itself without any injury to anybody. Okay? And that was, that was part of this contract that we don't use annually. We use it when it's there. And when it's there, it's nice to know. We have it. I know, Mayor, you participate in the shortstop program, which has been revived this year. It's another component of this that we're looking to do. I mean, I know that Captain King has reached out to the school on a number of occasions and spoke before students. So I see changes coming to this. I see changes that have happened over the last 12 to 18 months. You know, are we going to satisfy everybody? Apparently not. But I think until we can find a better, safer, more logical way to go about this, I don't see it yet. And we do look at this pretty regularly.
Are you guys doing some real work out there?
Okay, so. I just, for me, because I understand that we get all these additional deputies and all this, these other services and dispatchers, you know, 24/7 and blah, blah, blah. So there's a lot of activity there. I just want us to continue to have conversations with the captain about some of the needs that we feel aren't being met that we hear about all the time. And I think, and yes, they have made some changes, I'm appreciative of that, but I think there's still more work to be done. And I would like to keep those communications open with them.
The other point that I'll make, and I think Carl would be beneficial to discuss this sooner too, I don't mind having the discussion about this. We have had, I believe, now at least four, if not five, budget discussion meetings where different parts of the budget are discussed. And part of that is contract services, both for law enforcement and for the other contracts that we have and payments that we make and partnerships that we have. So I think definitely beneficial for you and for anyone that has concerns like this is to try to attend those meetings. Those are generally at least two months, if not a month and a half or a month prior to the approval. And that is a great time to discuss things like this. The other thing I will say and would be, and maybe Matt, if we can have a discussion of this offline after this meeting, is just to say that a number of ways that we do this is by pricing out what it would cost if we were to run it ourselves. And that's everything from building to.
Courthouse processing.
Vehicles, processing, everything, correct. So looking at what this budget currently costs us and what we receive from it, including the additional deputies that are not part of the charges that we pay and the discount we receive for the deputies that are paid and the amount of money that LA County is covering. I don't, and I would, I would like to be wrong, I would love to be wrong. I would love to be wrong. I don't see a way where we would be able to facilitate what they provide to us with the same amount of money.
You can't do it alone.
Correct.
You can't do it alone.
Correct.
So, I'm not asking you to do it alone either.
Yeah.
But to clarify about those budget meetings, do I have to be here for four hours where, when contract services doesn't show up?
No, and we weren't either.
Because the people that need to be at the table are contract services.
Right.
Not you guys, not our great finance director, not any of those people. Like, I watch those budgets too, and they're painstaking sometimes, but I watch those budget meetings, just because I'm not up here, doesn't mean I'm not paying attention to them.
Agreed, and sorry, not saying that you need to attend.
They are not coming to the table.
Right.
They hand us a piece of paper and tell us to sign it every year.
If you know.
And accept it, or take it or leave it.
If you know people that want to do this, have them submit what they're looking to do, and let's look at it and see what it is.
Absolutely.
But we haven't.
All of us are open to that.
We can't ever do it if we only have two weeks to do it.
Right, that's why I'm saying, let's do it ahead of time.
So, revisit it next year.
No.
Hey.
If you're hearing me, I'm saying let's revisit it before next year.
Yeah.
This is what I'm telling you. If it's a legitimate request for someone that wants to provide services and wants to do this contract instead of what we have, and they or you think that it's better than what we have right now, present the contract. Let's look at it.
Please.
Let's look at it.
There's things to look at, but there needs to be more than just you guys at the table.
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to say. So, like, there needs to be a discussion before the plan is made.
That's fine with me. We've got time. Let's look at it this year. Let's make it, let's make it happen. If we can make it happen, great, let's have that discussion.
We'll be able to, like, I would just say, like, we were going to hash it out, and you're like debating on whether to, like, call a vote or whatever, or hold it over, but you can't hold it over, because by the time the next meeting happens, the contract expires. So, like, you guys have to.
Right.
You have to do it, but let's not wait, let's not wait till two weeks before it has to be signed next year.
I will say that I am, right, I will say that I'm thankful for what we're receiving from LA County. I think that it's a contract that we, given what we're paying for it, would not be likely to come from someone just from a single individual rate pair. I'm, I don't have an issue with us looking at opening up that contract and having additional players. The need is that those players would need to be playing all the time and couldn't just choose to play or not to play. Right? It would fall apart if that was the case. So, anyway.
The players are already playing.
Right. What I'm saying is, if we want to do this, let's, let's bring it up, not just now, but let's go ahead and have a discussion about it and see what you're talking about.
Yeah, because essentially, you have a year.
Right.
Because like you said.
It doesn't have to wait until budget discussions. I'm just saying at that point, it would have, even two months ahead would have been more time to talk about it and look at it from then.
When I'm, if I bring it up at one of those budget meetings, I'm talking to council and finance director, but there is no contract services here to speak.
Right, I'm saying bring them to the table.
Or make something happen. So, like, coming to those meetings isn't really going to change the contract.
Right.
I think what they're trying to say is, if you do have ideas, submit them tonight, submit them tomorrow, so we can start the conversation.
I have plenty of ideas, but I feel like they would be used with, how do I say this politely? I have ideas, but I feel like execution would be poorly done if I wasn't involved. And so, I would love to be involved, I would love to come to the table, and I would love to have open discussions, but I've been, I've been a leper in this town since two years ago, if anybody knows my personal situation. So, it's a, nobody wants to touch me with a ten-foot pole.
Okay, but we.
So, if you guys, if you guys want to have, my door's been open and my phone has been on.
Right, ours too.
Well, because you're talking about there's other players involved, so you need to tell us, who are these players?
Island Company and Conservancy.
Okay.
They also have contract services, and they have, they have to cover large areas of land, and they have, they have paid large contracts as well.
Okay, well, so then, whomever you feel you want to talk with first about getting this thing together, so that maybe we can get somebody from the Conservancy, somebody from the Island Company to hear the concept, that's, I think that's where we start. Yeah, we need a little bit, a little bit more information to go on, to start opening talks, to start looking at stuff, you know, just, I mean, I get what you're saying.
You're asking to have the conversation where I feel like it's going to be poorly executed.
I can't help what you think about what our execution is, Carl.
Right.
If you don't want us to start the conversation and try to see if we can make something else happen, we need to have the conversation to start.
Right.
Okay. Remember, this is public comment, and we've heard public comment, it's not public discourse.
Sure. Thanks, Carl.
Oh, okay. All right. Oops.
So, am I, I'm getting cut off, and other people didn't get cut off? Okay.
Well, we know your, we got your opinion about this contract, that you say, you know, we don't have time to review it and not to the tables, but anyway, but here it is, so now we can decide what we're going to do. Yeah, and I look forward to hearing what, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to adopt a resolution notifying the LA County Board of Supervisors of the city's desire to receive specified law enforcement services from the LA County Sheriff's Office, authorizing the expenditure of COPS grant funds, and authorize the city manager to execute the service-level authorization form SHAD 575 for fiscal year 2023-24.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Other comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
I did want to say, although it is tough conversations, thank you to everyone up here, and even to Carl to still take the time to come up here and.
Yes, please, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Item number eight?
Item number eight is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive comment on the city's fiscal year 2023-24 community development block grant funds. Ask council to open the duly noted public hearing, receive comments, close the public hearing, approve the city's estimate fiscal year 2023-24 community development block grant funds for phase two of the ADA curb and ramp project, and finally, adopt a resolution authorizing the allocation of the CDBG funds for fiscal year 2023-24.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Is there any comments?
Can I add a public comment from up here?
Couldn't she add a public comment from up here? City attorney? Anybody?
Or I can add a council comment.
She can, she can, she can make a public comment.
Okay.
My public comment is that I'm thankful for the CDBG grants, and I will still ask that they start using a different formula than what they're using now that does not rely solely on census data. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, there's no.
Bringing all the heat tonight.
No further comment? Close the public hearing? And is there a motion to approve the city's estimated community funds for phase two of curb and ramp and adopt a resolution?
So, I'm moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
No further comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And if I have your approval, I would like to move item nine to the last agenda item. She's having to do a ghost tour, get sent up for a ghost tour, so she will be here probably around seven, and I'm assuming it might work out okay if I'm honest. That's okay? We'll move to item ten.
Okay, item ten is an amendment to professional services agreement with Catalina Falconry LLC, asking council to authorize the city manager to amend the professional services agreement for bird abatement services with Catalina Falconry LLC for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand two hundred dollars annually for the remainder of the existing contract term, which expires May twenty-fifth, 2024.
Any comments?
City council, just for the record, the contractor is not in the audience tonight. He's working his other job at this time.
Okay. Any comments or any action?
I'll move to approve that we authorize the city manager to amend the professional services agreement for bird abatement services with Catalina Falconry LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-nine thousand two hundred dollars annually for the remainder of the contract existing, excuse me, of the existing contract term expiring May twenty-fifth, 2024.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Item eleven is a Geologic Associates contract award. At this time, we do have Assistant City Manager Jocelyn Francis and a representative from Geologic also in the audience to answer any questions, but we'd be asking council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Geologic Associates for a not-to-exceed sum of five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for the, to commence the permitting for the Avalon landfill expansion. Jocelyn?
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to request approval to award a contract with Geologic and Associates to start the process for the vertical extension project of the landfill. So, some background that you guys have heard many times before now at this point. In four years, the Pebbley Beach landfill is expected to be at capacity by July thirty-first. The Geologic and Associates, they presented to council back in January, have already worked with CRNR on this project, and so they have familiarity not only with the Pebbley Beach landfill, but landfills in general. So, Geologic and Associates both work with CRNR and other agencies in the state of California, have a vast experience working within this field, and the current project description is to extend the landfill by building a retaining wall, an eighteen-foot retaining wall that is expected to increase the capacity by twenty to twenty-five years, in addition to the public outreach efforts that will be, you know, we're starting this week, the social media that we talked about earlier, in addition to this project. So, the services outlined in the proposal that you all have in your agenda packet includes the initial project description, formalization, analysis, consultation. It includes preparing the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit. Because the Pebbley Beach landfill is in an unincorporated portion of Los Angeles County, it will require coordination with LA County Regional Planning. It includes all of the special studies that need to happen, so aesthetics, air quality, biological, cultural, noise, and geotechnical studies. And then, the proposal also includes the SEQA process. So, in this case, the mitigated negative declaration, which includes environmental impact analysis, publication, comments, public hearings, of course, project management meetings, permit documents, and application preparation, and then administration. So, again, you guys saw this in January, design, a final, final design of the landfill. So, just doing this presentation to kind of clarify a little bit as far as it relates to the SEQA determination. So, the proposal that we received from Geologic and Associates includes a scope for a mitigated negative declaration process, as well as the environmental impact report. Tonight, I'm requesting approval for a contract as if the mitigated negative declaration process will be approved going forward. Essentially, after the initial studies, if it's determined there's no significant environmental impact, then will, the process will be sufficient with the mitigated negative declaration. However, if significant environmental impact is determined, we'll come back to city council and request an amendment to the existing contract with Geologic and Associates for an environmental impact report. So, again, here's my recommendation to award a contract with Geologic and Associates for an amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for the mitigated negative declaration alternative. And then, like I said, if initial studies find that we need to complete an environmental impact report, we'll come back to city council for an amendment of roughly three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. And that includes my presentation. Also, really quick, David from Geologic and Associates is in the audience, so if you guys have any technical questions related to this process, he's here to answer questions.
So, thank you, David, and thank you, Julia, Jocelyn, that was good. So, the mitigated negative takes it twenty-two to twenty-four months, right? Then, the environmental impact is twenty-eight to thirty-two, so that gets us into two years or four years practically, right?
Not exactly.
Okay.
I'd be happy to.
Because then I'm concerned, because then, then all of a sudden, if we needed to do that step three, that, the EIR, or that, whatever that other thing is, it would take that much longer.
Sure. Council members, madam mayor, staff, the process is you present to LA County Department of Regional Planning, you present the initial studies, the technical studies, to the county. At that point, they decide, they make a determination. And depending on whether it goes to a mitigated negative declaration, which we feel is the appropriate SEQA document for this, you have a certain timeframe which is presented to you. If, in the event that LA County Regional Planning determines that an environmental impact report is done, then that timeframe extends out. So, it's not the first plus the second.
It's one or the other.
It's, it's one schedule for the most part or the other. So, you're looking at twenty-four months, two years to thirty-two months, let's say, for, and that's assuming that everything goes well with the county.
Yeah. So, have you, since you've been in this business, have you ever done something where this is the way you extend the life of the landfill is by putting up an eighteen-foot wall?
It's been done. I haven't done it personally, but I will say that I've been in the business for forty-five years, grew up as a little trash guy, and it's a great concept. One of the things that we know for sure is that when you go to expand a facility horizontally and make it a bigger footprint, there are certain SEQA guidelines that you go into a whole new category of regulations.
Yeah.
For landfill liner systems, leachate collection systems. And so, in this particular case, it seemed to present to us a real logical engineering solution for extending the life of the site within the footprint that we're working with.
Okay.
And minimizing the amount of impacts associated with this expansion or extension of the life to fit, for example, the height of the retaining wall and the type of wall that we're proposing is a Caltrans standard retaining wall. Okay? And it's not going to exceed the height of the existing MRF facility that's there. So, a lot of thought has already gone into this, primarily, at some point, the island's going to have to do something with the waste. Presumably, we can get to zero waste. And just as a side note, by the way, I've been in this a long time, and I hope nobody caught me snooping, but I actually looked into some of those, those cans in the road coming, walking up here. And I've been in the business long enough to know that I have to commend CRNR and the city, in the community here. You guys are doing a really good job at a difficult task of educating the community to separate and to recycle. I see that out there. And so, short of eliminating a need for final disposition of the waste, at some point, it's going to come up again, and we're going to have to decide. This project, in the meantime, is a great project to buy a lot of time to really plan and figure out what is the future, where is that going to come from, what's that look like?
Okay, yeah. Questions? On this?
Any questions? Throw them at me, the more technical, the harder, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe we won't understand what the hell you're saying, so.
Well, part of the process then is we have LA County Regional Planning, and the California Coastal Commission will be a part of that process. So, anytime you get into, as you know, an environmental review kind of a process, and so, because we're short on time, that was definitely part of the consideration in the design report that we've already put together, that will be utilized as part of that going to LA for review. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Be happy to answer any more questions.
Is there any way they can say no? That you cannot do this?
Well, the law requires that you go through this process in an application procedure. So, it will be reviewed through a formal application to LA County Regional Planning Department. They then request and require a certain amount of information to be able to compile and make a decision, a determination, as they call it, as to what level of. and, and make a decision, a determination, as they call it, as to what level of CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act document is going to be required for the project. Once you have that CEQA determination, and what I can say to kind of go back to your question initially, although I haven't done the retaining wall specifically, we've done some other buttress fills and structural improvements to steepen up and vertically expand, but, but looking at it, it makes the most sense with the least amount of impact. And so, in my experience of doing this for 30 years, I feel, and we've got a great team of technical experts that will be involved in this, that a mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate CEQA document. And of course, that's, you know, the direction that we, we want to push for and present to the county.
Okay, questions?
Lisa? None on the actual report. The only question I had was with regard to the budgeting of the cost difference, and trying to remember what that number was in the budget versus if it does go the route of the EIR instead, do we want to at least start having some of that budgeted for over the next 12 to 24 months if necessary?
We're anticipating that from a budget standpoint, I'd also like to say that our current contract with CRNR has a balance of roughly 150, $145,000 to $150,000 left in it, which will also go to this initially.
Great.
So the first part of that, we will just use that, those funds down, and then we'll start paying.
Okay. I think that was my only question.
Jocelyn, did you have another comment? Okay.
So this, this amount of money is just to get this whole project started?
Correct. This is the permit, yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Yep.
Any comments, Devin?
No, no comments.
Then on that, I will, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Geologic Associates for not to exceed a sum of $520,000.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And, and I would just like to thank you for the amount of information that you gave us ahead of time, Jocelyn. Your staff reported very well, a lot of information.
Okay, I had asked to move item nine to the last one, but I see that she's in the audience, so if we can take item nine, that would be great.
Okay, item nine is consideration of a transportation permit for Haunted Catalina Ghost Tour LLC. Discuss and provide direction if consensus for approval is reached, make the affirmative finding that the criteria set forth in Avalon Municipal Code Section 5-14.04 has been met and award a transportation permit to Haunted Catalina Ghost Tours LLC pending confirmation of permit conditions being met.
Jessica.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff. So, my name is Jessica Hickman, and I am the owner-operator of the Haunted Catalina Ghost Tours. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
No, that's okay, you're amongst friends.
I just started the Haunted Catalina Ghost Tours a few months, and then, within my doing the tours, I've had people come to me and ask if we operate a ghost tour, like a driving tour, because a lot of people are handicapped and they can't do that walking. So, I would like to submit some letters that I got from some coworkers, that their mom was here from out of town, so as a favor, her mom couldn't do the walking, so I told her that I would personally take them on a ghost tour, just in my cart, but not an official one, so I didn't charge them. But, and it was only because her mom couldn't do the walking, so I would like to submit these letters if I can. So currently, we operate a walking tour where we start at the base of the casino, we walk through town. The permit I'm asking for is just for one golf cart. I am not asking for a fleet, I'm just asking for one golf cart. And it will only be operated four times a week. I, I may have changed it, because Mondays, I now do the podcast here on the island. Tuesdays is usually my free days, Wednesdays, I teach martial arts for the city, and then I also do water aerobics. Fridays, I do water aerobics as well, and then I'm starting a boxing class on Friday mornings for the city. So, I'm just asking for four days, if, if at all possible.
So on your, on your application, it says Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 12 to 2, 3 to 5, 6 to 8, so you're saying it would still be those three tour times, but only four days a week?
Actually, it'll be Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I have an updated...
Oh, okay.
Okay, submit this. Because I'm sole operator, basically, I do have Chuck Liddell, but, like, he can't do anything, I mean, I love Chuck Liddell. He can't do it all by himself, so regardless, I'm always helping him. However, when I do the tours, I'm a one-person show, so I'm the one that delves out all of the registration papers, and I handle all the customers, and then I do the tour, and I do the sanitation of headsets at night. So, with that, with saying that, I only want to work Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday for a couple tours a day. I don't, at first, I thought, well, maybe I could do like four tours on one day, and it's like, no, because I'm still operating my regular ghost tours. And like I said, I'm, I'm not asking for a fleet of golf carts, I just want one. I've already spoken with the Catholic Church, and they're going to approve me a parking spot over in the Catholic Church. I do have a parking spot where I live, but my cart, it'll stick out just a little bit because I have junk sitting behind my parking spot, so I figured it'd be safer if I parked it at the Catholic Church.
So it's a limo golf cart?
It is. Well, right now, it's a four-seater golf cart, but it is equipped to have six seats on it, so I have them working on getting that sixth seat put on.
Just make sure you measure it, and it's not oversized if this is approved.
Right.
Can't be over 130 inches?
Right.
Okay.
I do have DMV information.
Jessica, I just wanted to clarify one point, it's one commercial autolet, you're going to keep, your, your intention is to maintain your residential autolet?
That's correct.
And then get a new commercial autolet?
Correct. So the commercial one is only going to be for the, the ghost tours. And then, my little golf cart is for my other, because like I say, I teach martial arts here, and sometimes I have to haul my equipment back and forth, but it's easier to do it on my little golf cart than going and using a ghost tour golf cart.
Have you, when you talk about your, your route, have you spoken to the island company because you're traveling on a lot of their roads?
Um, no, to be honest, because I didn't know I had to do that, but I can do that.
You will, because if you're going to pick up at Descanso Beach, that's one thing, if you're going, there's a lot, and they do, if they agree, they do charge a percentage or a something, or something.
And require additional insurance as well.
And, yeah, an additional insurance, so, yeah. Yeah, so Descanso Beach, I don't know.
Well, I was thinking of the pickup being at People's Park, like at near Five Corner.
Oh, right here, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And you would be the sole operator?
I would be.
Okay. Well, any other questions of Jessica?
I like your idea of, you know, because you want to make sure this is ADA accessible, of picking them up at their hotel. I think my only concern would just be congestion, especially right now when we're super busy, all the rental golf carts and all the other businesses also trying to operate and use the sidewalks, so that's my only concern.
Yeah, taxis dropping off and picking up.
Yeah. I do think that's a great idea, though.
Well, I, I know that, like, for example, one night, I did a tour where someone had a prosthetic leg, and even though the tour is wheelchair accessible, it was still kind of difficult for him to walk that distance. And had we had the golf cart, I could have taken him around and kind of done almost the same tour, it's a little different because you're getting different areas. But, it would be nice to be able to share the island with people that have disabilities, because not everybody that has a disability is going to be in a wheelchair.
Right.
You know, we just have a lot of people that can't just walk that distance, and I want to be able to share the beauty of the island and the history of the island and all the mystery and the lore that comes with it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see a lot of difference between this and the other tours.
And, and these are only going to go like four hours a day versus the others that are just kind of, right, and on and on. And, and it doesn't seem to provide a problem. How do they see the ghosts during the day, though?
Well, they're around you all the time.
Oh, what is that device that you got?
EMF detector. Oh, gosh.
Yeah. Ooh, yeah.
I will tell you all the hot spots.
Oh, I've, I've experienced them around here, there's, there's a lot of spirits on the side.
Well, you know what, I run a podcast, and I would love for you to come on the red, the podcast, if anybody has experienced any ghosts.
Oh, okay, cool. All right, so, council, Devin, do you have anything that's come through?
No, we've received no comments.
Okay. So council, what's your pleasure?
The only hesitation I have is just in that we're adding a commercial vehicle as opposed to using a residential. And that being said, this will go before the vehicle hearing board to do the commercial approval, and they have their ways of doing that. So with that, I would say that I will make the affirmative finding that the criteria set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code Section 5-14.04 has been met and award a transportation permit to Haunted Catalina Ghost Tours LLC pending confirmation of permit conditions being met.
I'll second.
Okay. And you, you're aware, you do have to go before the vehicle hearing officer? Yes.
Yeah.
You'll have to set an appointment, okay.
And will you guys let me know when that's going to be this way? I have plenty of time to contact like the Catalina Island Company and, and see about, you know, the road travel, the path that I'm taking, if that's okay.
Right. I think our fire chief has a comment.
I think the vehicles are not going to be available till August, because June's is done, July's is already published in the paper, so she won't be able to get this till possibly August.
Oh, yeah.
The, the transportation permit, though, isn't contingent on the type of vehicle, so if she wanted to be in operation using her residential autolet, she could do so upon council approval.
Is it possible to transfer?
And then go get the...
And then get the, the six-pack, go to, with the, okay, great idea, Devin.
And then just the commercial has to be off-street, and this is not going to coincide with your walking tours, right?
No, definitely not.
And then, just make sure, just because you're on a tour, doesn't mean you get red lights on your vehicle, just obey all the traffic, don't park, don't do your tour in the red next to fire hydrant, and all that, park inappropriate.
Right.
Yeah, my, my husband was a civil engineer, so I can't even walk on a red, so.
I moved, was there a second?
Very, very soon.
Yeah, no, you seconded, so now we just...
Okay, call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Congratulations, Jessica.
Thank you, councilmembers, I appreciate it.
And if you have any questions on what happened today, you can call Devin.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm like great at spotting. Thank you.
So we're going to take a little break.
Sounds beautiful.
Okay, get up.
Ten minutes, yeah.
And then we'll come back for the budget.
Oh, yes.
I know. I know.